You want to wait?
Yeah, you want to wait five minutes?
Yeah. We're just waiting for some translation people to come, so we'll give it five more minutes, okay? Board of Appeals, I am Janice Tatarca, this is Marilyn Vega Torres, Joe Mahoney, and Hugo Perdomo, and on this side, we have John De Priest and Hector Velez. The first case in front of us is 2022-36, 6971 Spencer Ave, Z-Paj Development, for special permit variance seeking approval to demolish the existing two-family structure and for the construction of a 15-dwelling unit structure which does not meet the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance for maximum density, off-street parking, minimum lot size, and minimum open space. I'm going to remind you that this is being taped, oh, Ricky, I should have said 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Once, this is getting taped, so please make sure you speak into the microphone. Here we go.
Madam Chairman, can you give me one second?
Absolutely. Yeah, when they get there, I'll give them that. Should I get to say it a few times today?
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to check, are there only four members voting tonight?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are there only four members voting tonight?
Yes, we're it.
So you need unanimous, correct, tonight?
We do. Unless they want it delayed. Do you want to go forward, or?
If there's no objection, I'd like to table it to the next meeting.
Well, you can go forward, and if you feel like you're not going to get some.
Okay, I can try it that way.
It's really up to you guys, do we want to wait till next month? Do you want to prefer, would you prefer to wait till next month?
I have a policy, I tried never to do unanimous.
Just so you're aware, I will not be here next month, there will be two other members, but I will not be here next month.
If the board doesn't have an objection, it'd be a very short presentation, and if I get a feel that it's not going.
Then you can just say, hey, we're gonna, we would like to move, okay, why don't you do that?
Do you have a problem with that?
Why don't you make your presentation, if that's what you like?
David, can, John, do you have the, oh, good. So essentially, this is a two-unit dwelling, that it's a large site, and it's being converted to 15 residential units. After working with the city on this project, we actually increased the amount of affordable units to be four, correct, four affordable units, so it's far more than what's allowed on it. I believe we required three units, and we jumped it up to four affordable units, four inclusionary units. It would have, by right, it would have been 12 units, and it would have been, it would have shrunk the affordability down. So in excess for the three additional units, we added additional affordable units out of those.
You know, and I apologize to you, though, we know you, for the record, if you produce yourself.
Anthony Rossi, I'm the attorney for the developer, and the developer is present. The developer also developed the project right next door on Spencer Ave, and if I can, I have color renderings that can present to the board. And he did the adjoining property next door to it. Yes, I apologize, thank you. Yes, and these are the colored renderings, and he did the adjoining property next door. It came out great, I think the city was very pleased with it, and he acquired the property next door to do this development. The abutting property owner outside of my client, we, when we went to the planning board, they were concerned that they might be against it because the parking was on that side of the property, and they weren't going to support something without having influence or hear from him. Since then, because we wanted to expedite it, we digged a letter, fung data butter. If, I'm not sure if it's already been given.
It's a letter to whom may concern, I am Marvin Sanchez Bocadano, a resident of Chelsea, Mass, and I live and own 65 Spencer Ave, next to the Mario Zapaj's property. I have reviewed the plans, and I am in favor of the project, fully supporting Mario. I like the new building, its design, and appreciate this will bring the value of my house up. It will be an improvement for our street and the City of Chelsea. I know Mario's a good developer, and that he will do a good job, just like he did at 75 Spencer Ave.
And essentially, that is the only abutter outside of my client that abuts the property. My client owns the other property, so we didn't have that at the last hearing because we would, we didn't know that was a concern from the planning board, but we certainly did want to provide it to the board, that he did see the plans, my client.
One second, just so, the translator is here now, for anybody who is in need of, could you raise your hand, so that anybody is in need of English translation, she will be here to help you.
And if we could, so it has 15 parking spaces for 15 units, of which four of those units will be inclusionary units. With the standard AMI that requires in the city, I believe it's the 30, the, what is it, John, 30, the 60, the 65, or 50, 65, and then that fourth unit would be at 80% AMI on that, because that's not part of the statutory, but it does count as an inclusionary unit. And we do have a handicapped spot parking there. There's a different elevation, and Rick Savo is not here from, and that was one of the things we talked about with John, that he had concerns about regarding the elevation, how it's all going to be graded that way. All those concerns from the city, those elevations, have been addressed as far as from the rear parking entrance because of the way it slopes and so forth, that's been addressed with John and the engineer. So as far as landscaping is concerned, we do have landscaping on this side of the property, all the way around, all the way around here, and all the way around here, and this is a curb cut for the entrance for the spots.
Is existing curb cut?
Yes, I believe it's expanding, right, it was over here before, right?
It's expanding, and you are relocating the street tree that's there.
Correct.
And it's showing, you're showing that on the plan.
Correct. And we, of course, added far more greenery than what's existing on it, and we also created a buffer here. The owner next door actually has a four-foot stone wall that's sort of on this side here, so we're also creating a fence and screening on this side on top of it, to get rid of that aesthetic habit, you know, and we do have green space here, and green space around the perimeter of the building. The only violations really are the amount of units, because it goes by the square footage of lot size, and on the 12,000 square feet, the lot size, we recall 12 units, and we have five, 15. The other violation is maximum density, which goes in the same thing for the.
When you say violation, you mean a special permit requirement, or a variance requirement?
Yes, especially, this would be a variance requirement. And the only other thing was open space, and the open space were at 113 square feet, and that's 150. And I do want to note that a big problem with this property is it's in flood zone. So under the new floodplain rules, because of the grading, and we have to bring the grading up in order to comply with the flood zone, and those are the, those are the three variances.
Okay, thank you.
Everything else is a special permit.
This one has been addressed, so that is no longer a special permit that's required, parking island has been addressed.
Correct. And this property is in a flood zone, so as a result of that, there's only so much space because we're going to take the building up, and we didn't want to do a roof deck based on hearing from neighbors who not wanted to see roof decks and so forth, but we're pretty much almost close to the required open space, but we didn't want to take away parking to create more open space. The building will be, of course, a fully sprinkled building, and David, does the building have an elevator? No, because it's three stories, correct? And trash, and dumpster?
We have a trash room.
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is David Barsk, I'm the architect of record for the project.
I'm sorry, so what's the, where's the, where's the trash?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, John, can you go to the first floor plan, please?
This one's for you, Hugo. Where's the trash? Is the trash stored inside?
There is a trash, I know there's a trash room inside the building, yeah, here it is.
But if it's inside, it's not, oh, okay.
It's inside the building, and it has double doors here exiting, so for private pickup. So it's all set up from here.
And you said it's three floors?
Three stories, which doesn't require an elevator. The height, everything is compliant, and so is the size of the building, the setbacks, it's just the amount of units that are required. So this is a trash pickup here, and I believe they have, isn't there another room here for bike storage?
That's your main lobby there.
Main lobby, and what's that?
It's a bedroom.
Okay, sorry, so, and that, yeah, that's the trash room, right?
That was correct.
Okay.
You're going to use the microphone?
Where is the elevator?
There is no elevator, you said no elevator. No elevator.
Well, the old plans had an elevator.
The what?
The old plans that we have have an elevator.
Did it?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe there's an elevator. No, yep, no, it was never an elevator. It's three stories, I asked if there was, that's why. And as far as snow removal is concerned, any condition, of course, but this will be, just like he does the other parking lot, he does private, my client's a contractor, he maintains the property, but any excess snow, we could always throw in here in the wintertime, which is a green area, and push it there, but if it blocks any parking, of course, we'll remove it immediately, and that can be a condition, but we do.
Are these rental or ownership?
Rentals.
Rental, and what's, what's the makeup size, bedroom size?
Bedrooms range, bedrooms range around 10 to 11 feet by about 12 to 14 feet.
But I mean, how many bedrooms, one bedroom, two bedroom, what's the mix?
Mostly one bedrooms, yes. Yeah, we have, that's correct, we have 11 one-bedrooms and four twos.
And that mixture will be split up amongst the, amongst the inclusionary, too.
This plan shows an elevator.
Can I see?
He's very good at looking at the plan.
I don't know, is this this building or the one next? Is this 6973? This is 6973. Yeah, how many units was this?
What do you look at?
Where's the elevator?
Yeah, no more elevator.
Yeah.
We have, we have accessible units.
No, no, I'm just trying to see where, how many units this plan has.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I don't, I didn't have this plan. And that's essentially the project, and I'll gladly answer any questions this board may have.
Does it, so what was that?
This one shows an elevator, John.
But, so you have, do you have a corrected plan that does not include an elevator, John?
Well, is it going to include an elevator?
It is not, it is not.
Good. What is the date of that plan?
September 22.
September?
December.
September 22.
This is, this is December 19, 22, so an updated plan was submitted.
So you, so they've had a plan.
That might have been before they did the approvals, I don't know how that got in, because when we submitted December, that was, this was the plan that was submitted, so I don't know how that came about.
There was some discussion with the planning board, and some changes were made, I don't think directly related to the elevator, but related to other issues.
But, but there has been, you have something that's more up to date than the one that Hugo's looking at, is what we're saying. Okay?
Thank you, and I'll gladly answer any questions this board may have.
I'm going to open this up, before I open to the public. But just so, just so, this has already gone to the planning board, so we, if we are, now I'll ask John how that happened. Well, John, what did the planning board say?
The planning board had concerns relative to the proximity to the building on this side, and they had some concerns relative to the size of the units. The planning board did recommend that the zoning board deny approval. However, the city is supportive because of the extra affordable unit.
The planning board did not recommend denying approval?
Yeah.
Okay, so anyways, but we have an ability to decide on this today, because it's already gone to the planning board. Anybody have questions?
Is the building empty? Is any tenants in the building right now?
Right now, no.
It's been empty?
Introduce yourself, please, sir.
Mario Zapaj, I'm the owner. No, it's been empty for the past eight months.
Eight months, and how long will?
I finish in eight months.
This building will be done in eight months? If it gets approved, and every day is eight months?
Start to finish eight months. I did the other building for six months during the COVID, next door. I mean, we pick up the charge two, two, three times a week, I'm there every day, you know? So, thank you.
And there was no abutters that were opposing it in the planning board. The big concern was the abutter next door, because, which is why we got the letter.
Thank you.
We still didn't want to continue the hearing, because my client really wants to try to move forward, and especially in the dead of, you know, doesn't want to build this in the wintertime, if the board approved it, he wants start construction right away.
But you have the support of the next door neighbor.
Of the next door neighbor, correct.
Marilyn?
What are the square footages again of the one bedrooms?
They're right here. So the average one bedrooms range is small as 473, 573, 573, 618, 544. And the two bedrooms range. 964? 964.
And John, how many parking spaces would they require?
So there's 15.
There's 15.
15 units times one and a half.
22.
Would be 22 plus, you have, how many bed, three bedrooms?
No, two.
No bedrooms, so.
Yeah, all two, all one bedrooms, and I think there's.
Four two bedrooms.
11 ones and four twos.
So 23.
23, okay, and they have 15? Okay, all right. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? As this has gone to the planning board, I'm going to close the public participation portion of this. Okay, guys, what are, let's, you know, we said that we would fairly just talk about this, given that we have, to have unanimous situation here. What are your thoughts?
The planning board denied it, wants us to deny it because of the size of the units?
They were concerned that the units were small.
Okay. And they were concerned about the park, close proximity to the building, but that one has been addressed. Because you're going to build a fence, too, and the, okay.
But the city is okay with the affordable?
Yes.
And you intend on owning the property and managing the property?
Yeah, my client.
Because he owns the next one?
Yeah, he owns all of his property, he doesn't sell them. I can tell you that as far as the developer and builder is concerned, he's there like three, four times a week. He loves his properties, I think that's one of the reasons why the abutter liked what he did next door, and saw in two years what he's done, and he's committed to continue to do so. He's not one of those guys who buys and flips. He buys it, he builds it himself, and he keeps them, and he maintains them. And the size of the units, I think more wanted more two-bedroom units, than more than that the one bedrooms are too small, because the one bedrooms are, you know, pretty standard in new construction, 550, you know, actually, some of them even larger, 600 square feet, and 1,000 square for two bedrooms, but why not have more two bedrooms? But, and to do these type of projects, you know, and you're getting, you're doing one bedrooms, you want to have, you don't want to have parking on the street, that's why you do more one bedrooms and so forth, and we give the city more, you know, four inclusionary units rather than three, to do so.
John, what is the, what's the position of the city, and what are their, of the planning department?
The department is supportive, particularly because of getting an extra affordable unit, and of the mix of ones and twos, it does provide a variety for those who need that. And I personally, I've seen the work that Mr. Zapaj done, he does excellent work.
Does anybody have a thought? Do you go, do you have any thoughts? Do you want to vote on this? Do I have a motion?
Doesn't he go the variance, no variance?
It's, it's what? Oh, yeah, I'm so, thank you! Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Variances. Let's go through the variances. Where are my conditions, John, I don't have my conditions with me.
Right there.
Oh, okay. The, okay, specifically, we're looking for variances for, again, remind us, for minimum lot size, maximum density, and a minimum usable open space. So those are the requirements, let's go back, and let's look at that.
That's not the one I want.
Nope, that's okay.
I don't want the four conditions of a variance.
There we go. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
If I may, so this property, like, as I stated, is in a flood zone. So because of the shape of the lot, and it has a different grade going into the back of the property, which is one of the concerns the city had as far as the curbing is concerned, so there's open space, and there's usable open space, and there's also lot size. But because we're trying to build within the setbacks, and also not have a basement for mechanicals, because, and units that, for floodplain purposes, you've got to build above the floodplain level. So that's all trickled into this, which is why the topography, we needed a variance, because if not, we couldn't build within the setbacks and still meet the floodplain requirements on it. And I will note that it doesn't affect the general of the zoning district when there's other multi-unit structures on similar lot size on the street, as my client did seek similar relief on the adjoining property as a whole.
I do have concerns relative to the size of the units.
Well, I think we want to be fair here, so we, you know, one of the things I said, so if we're not comfortable with this, then I would just assume if we, well, I'm not a Realtor, so I don't know the size, but I don't, I don't want to be, I would rather us bring this back, if we're, there's only four of us here, there's not six of us. If we're, if we're not comfortable making a decision on this, to be fair, I don't, I am not comfortable, I would rather move it to next month.
Okay, I agree.
So, because I mean, if you feel that we're not, if you have other concerns, that, and we would not ultimately get an unanimous decision one way or the other today, either for or against, then I don't think it's fair, as we began this, when Mr. Rossi earlier said, I just assume not to deal with this, I'm not going to subject him to, I think that would be inappropriate for us to decide then.
And I think, based on the letter that was submitted today, that you weren't going to be here, I think that sort of compounds my thinking.
What, what, wasn't he going to be here?
Well, they had asked for.
No, that's for 305.
Oh, sorry.
No, where, this, that's for 305, that has nothing to do with this. So if your concern is the size, Joe, then I think that you may want to ask what your concern is, and ask, if that's the case, then be prepared to come back next month with how those sizes of the apartments compare to other ones, that, other one bedrooms and two bedrooms in the apartment, in the area.
Absolutely, and I do want to state, I don't think they had a concern with the size of the one bedrooms. I think they wanted to see more two bedrooms, rather than one bedrooms, because actually, one bedrooms are average around 550 square feet. Almost every new building, like the ones they're seeing on Chelsea clock, the average one bedrooms there are 550 to 600 square feet. It's more that we'd like to have more families and more two bedrooms in these, and rather than having more one bedrooms, and twos and threes, which sort of goes against what the city's multiple objective is, is to have more one bedrooms and more, less, you know, transient housing, so it cut both ways. So it wasn't more that the sizes, because the 550 a square feet for a one bedroom is pretty normal, if not above the mean. Their concern was two, one with the abutter that they didn't know if he had noticed, if he knew what was going on, because it affects him the most, which is why we brought the letter and speak in support. And the other one was the two-bedroom mix, they wanted to see more two bedrooms. So in essence, if we did more two bedrooms, we'd have less units, then we'd be compliant, but then we have, we lose an inclusionary unit. So we're sort of, and the city, I don't want to speak for the city, but their objective is to have more one-bedroom, you know, mixture, and not affect the school department, what have not, so we were trying to do something that.
So in creating two bedrooms, you'd ultimately, instead of having 15 units, you might have only 12 or 10.
Correct.
And if that was the case, then what you would do is ultimately lose, if not, lose at least one, if not more, of the affordable units. So that would be the impact. So it's weighing the situation of, it, one bedrooms and for two bedrooms allow there to be a more inclusion, I'm just translating, more inclusion, more inclusionary units if we expand. So I mean, if that's, in other words, if your concern is something different, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that we're, that's what I'm hearing, that's what seems to be the balancing act here that we're being asked to look at. Does it make more sense to have, if we have more two bedrooms, then we lose inclusionary units? And what is, what is the concern that the city, and therefore, I guess in this case, is most interesting?
Certainly table it to the next meeting and give you more information, and just, but I wanted to at least clear up, that's what that was more about, more that, why don't we have more families and so forth, than what have not. So I have no objection to table it to the next meeting.
Well, and then you would have to do the presentation, you would have to be willing to accept the fact that there are others here, and you have to do the presentation again.
No problem.
Joe, is that, would we be more comfortable for you? Okay, then we're going, we're going to continue it to the next meeting, okay?
That's fine, thank you, I'm sorry for wasting everybody's time.
Please take a vote.
Oh, can I, do I have a vote to continue, do I have a motion to continue this to the next meeting? Second, Joe, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, Madam Board.
And you'll leave the public portion open.
Yes, and I will reopen the public portion, so that we can speak to it next week.
And I have 305 Eastern Ave.
I'm going to do that next.
Oh, you did get it, just wanted to make sure you got it, that's fine.
I got it, and we're going to do that next, so you can go. So we have, we're going to take this slightly out of order. 2023-03, 305 Eastern Ave, has made a request to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a motion to grant that withdrawal without prejudice? Made by Marilyn, second, Joe, all in favor?
Thank you very much. And John, I'll email you that plan on this, just so if you, maybe Kyle want to comment? Okay, thank you.
The next case in front of us is 2023-01, 207 Shirtlift Street, James D'Amico Jr., trustee, special permit seeking approval to convert the first floor recreation into five residential units, which does not meet the minimum requirement for off-street parking, as well as the special permit authorizing the extension, alteration, or change to a non-conforming structure. This has also already gone to the planning board, John, what did they say?
They recommended approval with standard conditions.
Standard conditions, okay. And we would also add to that, anything other, some additional conditions, okay. Sir? Teresa?
My name is Jim D'Amico, I own 207 Shirtlift Street here in Chelsea. We're looking for relief for parking and density for.
So have you made any changes since, because you did present this to us.
I did.
Prior to, even though we weren't here last month, you had presented this to us the month before, you had, what was that, February?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this February, so you already came to us in February. Have you made any changes to this since we spoke in February?
No, I have not, no.
Do we have any additional questions based on the conversation that we had with him in February? Joe? This public portion of this hearing is still open, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. This is a special permit only. John, tell us what the planning department has to say about this.
Planning board, the planning department recommends approval with standard conditions as applicable. Be subject to a community impact trust fund payment, and residents are not eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program.
Are you comfortable with those requirements?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
There are standard conditions that are as applicable, and there's a whole list of them, and.
Yes.
They are community, you have to make a community impact trust fund payment.
Yes.
And the residents, because you're looking for parking relief, are not eligible for the resident sticker parking permit.
I agree, yes.
Do I have a motion on this?
Can we make a motion to approve case 2023-01, 207 Shirtlift Street, for a special permit seeking to approve to convert the first floor to five residential units with the standard conditions?
And the, and the additional, as well as the community improvement trust fund and the parking permit?
Yeah, and that, too.
Do I have a second? Joe, all in favor? Takes a couple of weeks, it gets written up, talk to Hector, timing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good, thank you. 2023-02, 80 Park Street, Chase and Fayop, there is, do we, would like to make a vote with the, to continue this to the May 9 meeting? Do we have a motion to continue this to the May 9 meeting?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
I'm Chase at 80 Park Street, I'm looking to get relief from not having open space or parking available.
No, you want to continue this to the next meeting?
No, I'd like to.
Wait, you did not get, you did not go before the planning board, you did not get a recommendation?
Right, and I'm supposed to start here, right? I think.
You can, it's up, yeah, he's here, it's up to the, it's up to the board.
Right, well, we were, we were told to vote, well.
With the, I guess since last month, they got canceled because of weather.
Okay, but we're not going to, you can, you can make the presentation today, but we won't be voting on it today. You have to go to the planning board on the 25th.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'll do that.
That's, that's the time, we can't, no, no, you can, you can, this is how it works. You come to the special, for a special permit, you come in front of the zoning board, then we have. Then we have to go, then it has to go two weeks later to the planning board for a, and they make a recommendation back to us and it comes back to the next meeting. So it's a three-part thing. It comes to us, one, then planning board, then back to us. So you can make the presentation today, but we won't be deciding this today.
Okay, okay, got it. I'll, I'll go ahead and make the presentation today.
Okay, good.
So, uh, yeah, I'm just trying to convert from a single family to a two-family. Uh, the ground floor, floor will be one unit and then second and third will be unit two. And uh that, that unit will be one bed and one bath and upstairs will be four bed and one bath.
Did you, I'm sorry, can you say again your name for the record?
Chase Fayela.
Okay, mhm. So say, tell me, so you are, you want to.
Yeah, converting a single family to a two-family and not making any changes to the building other than sealing off one door. Uh, there's already two means of egress for the upstairs unit. The downstairs unit will be about eight hundred square feet and have sole access to the basement.
How many bedrooms are each floor, or each, each?
Uh, the first floor unit will be one bed, one bath. Upstairs will be four bed and one bath.
Four bedroom?
Yes. And I will be occupying one of those units. And open space is about a hundred and twenty square feet and no off-street parking.
Do you know that you need variances for this? So you should, you should make sure there are certain, the way that var, special permits, we have a little discretion, variances, we don't. So for, there are four conditions for variance, which you should get the information for, and you have to meet all of them. You have to, so you have to meet all four of the requirements for us to be able to approve it. So and you need to justify that to us, okay? So that's, and that's your responsibility. We'll work with, what are we, what are we looking at for the?
I I didn't clue cause I thought they were.
Oh, all right. Don't worry about it. So, all right, so is there, do you have any other? But make sure you look at the variance requirement so you understand what you're gonna need them for, okay?
Okay, yeah, I've, I had this approved already, actually, and I lost, I just got too busy. And actually, it was during COVID, so I was doing it all online. Uh, so lost track of time and it lapsed.
Yeah, well, you're right, but you've made some changes from what I understand.
Uh, no.
No, you haven't.
Yeah, you have the uh second bed, the second unit has four bedrooms. Last time it was only three bedrooms.
Well, so I guess technically it is three. Uh, I had, I I thought it was four bedrooms and I had Halal or Halil uh come, come by a few months ago and he walked it with me and let me know that one bedroom would not be able to be a bedroom. Uh, because it, the, the second means of egress goes through that room, so technically it can't be a bedroom.
But you are, but you came in front of us last time and you said it was gonna be three.
I I don't remember exactly what I said last time. It's been a couple of years.
Okay, well, because it's.
I checked the decision. The decision said three bedrooms.
Okay.
And because it's lapsed, and because it's lapsed, you ha, and it, it does, you have to start as though we've never heard it before.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so, do you have any questions on this?
Yeah, so I don't, I'm just saying, was it, why are you changing from last time? Is it more bedrooms than than last time?
One bedroom. It's three bedrooms still.
That will be, it's three bedrooms on the upper floor.
Two. But you need to, you, you, you can't guess that. You have to tell us, cause that's what we're gonna approve. You have to decide, it's three bedrooms, you need a design that shows three bedrooms, not four beds. So I don't know, I, you know, so you.
So, I guess could you go?
One, two, three.
To the one slide up or one page up?
No, that's, that's, that's the third floor. One, two, three.
It's the second floor, whichever, where the kitchen is.
Kitchen, dining room, living room.
Yeah, so I, I do have it labeled as a living room here. I apologize for that. So it is, on here, on the plan, it is three bedroom.
So it's three bedrooms and one bath?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what, and that's, and that's, is that what your plans, the plans say?
Yeah, yeah, a- all that does is reduces the number of parking spaces required by a half. And you can't have a half, so it's still the same number.
Yeah, I just don't want to approve four. I don't want it to, you know, I want to make sure it's a favorable approval again.
Assuming you.
If we talk.
If you approve it, I will write it up with just three.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions? Do you go, did you have some questions?
So there's one in the, in the, on the first floor. The, that will still the same, one.
Yes, just sealing one door and that separates the two units.
Nope, wrong, wrong way. There we go.
Joe, anything at this time? Marilyn? So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, we will not close the public participation portion. You have to go to the planning board on the twenty-fifth and back here on May ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Two oh two three dash oh four, twenty, two twenty-seven Marginal Street, Molly Corporation, for a special permit seeking approval for the storage of airport ground service equipment and parts of first floor administrative staff office space on the second and third floors.
My name is Harold Kalik and I own the building at two twenty-seven Marginal Street. Uh, I'm asking because of the bylaws of.
Talk, make sure you're talking to the microphone.
Because of the bylaws in the city of Chelsea, it requires a special permit in order to, for me to get a certificate of occupancy. The use of the building will be the same as it's always been, except the new tenant is Textron Corporation and they're airport-related. So I'm asking the board to allow me to have them as a tenant, there's a signed lease already. Uh, instead of being warehouse slash office, we want to use warehouse slash office, airport-related. I think basically that's, that's all.
And John, this has gone to the planning board already?
Yes, they recommended approval with conditions.
Okay. Is there any, so we can decide on this if we're so inclined because it's already gone to the planning board. Does anybody have any questions?
So nothing will change, nothing which is just a name.
There's no construction, there's no building permit, everything remains the same.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Excuse me, everything remains the same. The, the physical, there was no construction involved at all. It's the same, it was office, and I harbor food service, used it for repair and storage on one side and Textron.
And this is an airport, this is an airport-related use?
Yes, the um Textron builds the um vehicles that pull the airplanes in and out, so.
Okay.
Are they now in the building or or is it empty?
Right now, they're located in East Boston and uh I'm fortunate enough to, they want to come to Chelsea. So they run three shifts a day, uh eight-hour shifts. They have approximately thirty people that will take up those three shifts and they have their office and billing on the second and mezzanine, which is the third floor.
So this will be twenty-four hours operation? They will be working twenty-four hours operation?
Yes, from what I understand.
And trucks coming in an hour at the same time? No?
No, no, it's just a, it's a home base for them. Uh, they only work for one airlines at the airport.
And there's no vehicles stored at the facility?
No, no, it's a parts distribution and a place where they come and change and and have their offices.
Marilyn? What would the standard conditions be? I mean, you, what other additions besides the stand, just no vehicles to be stored there?
Yeah, the fire department asks for a condition of no vehicles stored in the building.
So this is a public portion, a public, public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this. John, what does the planning department say?
Planning board, planning department recommends approval with uh standard conditions as applicable and no vehicles to be stored in the building.
You okay with that? No vehicles stored in the building? Is that, are you, are you okay with that condition that there would be no vehicles stored in the building?
Yes, there's no storage.
Do we have a motion on this?
The door to go into the building is only, there's an existing door and uh we actually kept a barb cat in there, but uh I, they're gonna use it mostly for the, the spot storage and whatever, but there'll be no vehicles stored. It's not big enough.
Is there any, is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Mhm.
I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, two twenty-seven Marginal Street, Molly Corporation, for a special permit seeking approval for solid, for the storage of airport ground service equipment and parts on the first floor and administrative staff on the second and third floors with the standard conditions.
And the no vehicles.
And the no vehicles, storage, for storage.
Do we have a second, John?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Twenty twenty-three dash oh five, four forty Broadway, Causeway Development, for a special permit in variance seeking approval for the construction of a five-story building with twenty-eight affordable home ownership units, which does not meet the minimum requirements for rear yard setback, open space, minimum off-street and minimum off-street loading, minimum off-street parking and minimum off-street loading.
All right. Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Dan Hubbard. I'm with Causeway Development, the developer, uh, here with our architect Andres and lawyer Matt Snell. Um, so I can take you through this presentation. Uh, this site, uh, as you may be familiar with, is the Salvation Army site, uh, just down the road from here. Um, this is our rendering of the new building. Uh, right now, just a one-story building. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So again, I'm sure you're familiar with this, but there's a location on the right, uh, and the existing building right now. Uh, just the one-story vacant building owned by the city. Uh, next slide. Some more existing conditions, the front on the left, uh, and that's the rear on Cherry Street. What you'll see is that the rear uh is a little bit lower than uh the front. Uh, so, you know, just above these windows here is the first floor level there. Which will come into play when we talk about parking. Uh, next slide. Uh, so that's just from the side on Luther Place and an interior picture of what we have now. Uh, next slide. So our goals for this project, um, primarily, we wanted to create affordable homeownership opportunities for Chelsea residents. Um, we have developed affordable rental uh throughout Chelsea uh for the past ten years or so. Uh, we're just finishing up our thousand-five Broadway project. Got our temporary certificate of occupancy yesterday, I believe, um, down the road on the Revere line. Uh, so what we heard during that process and what we've heard, uh, talking to the city quite a bit is trying to find ways to do affordable homeownership uh as well and have all kinds of different affordable housing opportunities here. Uh, we also wanted to establish uh some great storefronts in retail along Broadway. Uh, and we think, you know, we're thinking a lot about what the back of the building is like and not just treating it like the back of the building, but since it focuses out on Luther Place, kind of having it be a uh, a secondary front to a certain extent, and we can show you some images of what we're looking at there. Um, next slide. So just uh, again, quickly, probably nothing new here, but uh, you know, with our thirty-eight apartments that are opening up uh this month and filling up uh on Saturday, uh, we got three thousand applications for thirty-eight units. Uh, we know that half of Chelsea households are rent burdened, thirty-three percent spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing. The homeownership rate's only twenty-seven percent, uh, so we just need a massive amount of quality, affordable housing of every type. Um, so what we're proposing here is twenty-eight new homes. Uh, they'll range from about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to three hundred and eighty-six. Um, we can get into the uh affordable median income levels that that corresponds to. Uh, and we will be asking the state for the maximum allowable preference uh for Chelsea residents, which is usually a seventy percent preference. Uh, next slide. So just the timeline of this project, um, it's been before this board, so uh uh, the city uh was able to get a special permit in variances for their original plan uh in twenty nineteen after they had taken the property, uh, brought it forward. Uh, in May twenty twenty-one, the city put out an RFP uh to find a developer to develop the site. We responded, uh, held some public meetings to review our proposal last summer, um, or uh two summers ago. Um, the city council approved the LDA by the end of the year. Uh, we executed the LDA last year after negotiating for a little while and we submitted uh in February um for the special ver, permit and variances and were in front of the planning board last month. Uh, next slide.
What did the planning board have to say, John?
Planning board recommended approval with conditions.
Okay, good. Continue, I'm sorry.
So just a reminder of the previously approved project, um, it was sixteen units, uh, similar height. Uh, there were eight parking spaces, so uh half a space per unit. And the retail was smaller at nine hundred and sixty-six square feet, um, with the parking tucked behind uh on Cherry Street. Uh, and so it received uh variances for rear yard setback and usable open space and special permit for the parking spaces, uh, both number and location. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So the current project, uh, what we're looking at are twenty-eight affordable condos. Uh, fourteen will be at eighty percent area median income and fourteen at a hundred percent area median income. Uh, the commercial space, uh, we have uh forty-nine hundred square feet. Um, most of the first floor, other than the lobby and elevator lobby. Uh, it'll be five stories long Broadway. As I mentioned, there's kind of an extra half-story in the back, so five and a half along Cherry Street. Um, we have uh the parking, you'll see in the plans, comes in from Cherry Street into what is now the basement. Uh, there will be a speed ramp down to that. We have put as many parking spaces as we possibly could down there and we have nineteen spaces uh down there. Uh, we'll have some public art and mural space along Luther Place and we are going to cover the roof uh with a solar array uh to help offset some of the common area electricity charges.
Do we have any of the solar arrays downtown, John?
I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I, yeah, I believe we, we do. I just don't know where off the top of my head.
All right, so this uh lists the relief requested. Um, we also threw in the previous project there. Um, so for variances, the minimum rear setback of twenty feet, we're proposing zero, just like the previous project, which is the existing condition on the site. Uh, it's built back to the property line. On the usable open space, um, we are proposing five hundred and fifty square feet, which Andres can show you where that is. Uh, primarily, the, our only real other option for open space is the roof deck. Uh, we would prefer to put solar up there. Um, and so we, we think that's the best use for that space and given the downtown location and proximity to parks, um, we thought, you know, that's a better use uh for, especially for families than going up to the fifth story roof deck. Um, and then for off-street parking, uh, as I said, we have nineteen spaces, which would be point six seven per unit compared to the eight previously at half a space per unit. And loading, uh, the requirement for a space, and we don't have any uh loading here. Um, we'll go to the next slide. So I'll hand this over to Andres. He can take you through the design quickly.
Hello, uh, I'm Andres Bernal. I'm with uh JG Architecture and Design. Uh, next slide, please.
It might be easier if you just actually pick up the microphone, cause then it's.
Okay. All right, let's try this. Okay. Um, what we have here is, this is the site, it's, you know, a highlighted, what you see move uh from left to right at the bottom, that's Broadway, Cherry Street at the top, left to right. Uh, this is just the civil plan, but it does show the, the residential entries on Broadway and also our connections to the possible transformer. Next slide, please. This is actually the, the architectural floor plan. We're now looking at what we call the first floor plan. Uh, that would be accessed right from Broadway, from Broadway. Uh, the two double doors that you see to the left, that would be the, the doors that would access the commercial space, forty-nine hundred square feet. Uh, storefronts on Broadway and it would extend all the way to the back with opportunities to connect to Luther Place. To the right of those two double doors, we have the residential entry. You see, it's, um, we have two stairs that would essentially create the, the, the two means of egress uh that serve the whole building, uh, all the way up to the fifth floor. And the cross in between the stairs is the elevator. So this is an elevator building that would provide accessibility throughout the building. And then there is also uh of the second stair, there, there is a path out to um Cherry Street, which would be an accessible egress path to, as a second means of egress. Uh, next slide, please. Now I'm taking you down to the basement, uh, or the, the garage level. Uh, we, uh, again, Cherry Street is on the top of the slide. What you see to the right is, is a, a speed ramp that takes you down from Cherry Street down to essentially the existing height of the, of the basement. Uh, and then from there, you go either, you know, left or right, and we have um nineteen parking spaces. It's uh nine compact spaces and ten full-size uh spaces. And we also have, right next to the elevator, we have a bike parking and one of the stairs goes all the way down and we also have ax, uh, elevator access to the parking level.
Will you, will you need a?
Will you need a card of some kind to get into the parking spot?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do you need a card access or something to get into the garage?
Yes.
How come it's a different design for the parking area, the plans that you have there?
Oh, how come they're a little different?
Are they different?
Yeah, I think we improved on the, on the layout of the parking. I think that there were some, some issues, so we just, we submitted an update, updated drawings to John to improve on that. But essentially, it's the same parking spaces.
This is the old design?
I'm sorry?
The layout, the layout of the parking is the old one, that is the new design?
That is the new design, yes.
We received comments from the building inspector.
Could you comment, introduce yourself, please?
Matt Snell, Nutter McLennan Fish. We received comments from the building inspector on the layout of the parking, and so this is the updated plan based on his comments on how it should lay out and how size, the sizing of the spaces and access to them, how people can back in and things.
So it's 38 apartments, right? Is that right?
It's 28.
28?
Mm-hmm.
So how, 28, who's going to get the spot? So it will be like 11 without spot, and who's going to get these spots out of 28 apartments?
Yep. So there are 19 spaces, so there will be nine units that aren't able to get a parking space here. The selection for the units will go through a standard lottery process. That is how we currently plan to allocate the parking spaces. Our experience in similar affordable housing has been that we don't have one car per space that actually about two-thirds is roughly the right amount. So although we can't predict who our folks will be and whether or not they have a car, we think this is the right amount for...
But it's done by lottery, and so it's, so you're not going to have 19 spaces, but 28 people have access to it?
No.
There will be 19 spaces and 19 people will have access.
There will be a garage, there will be 19 people have a card to be able to get in, will know who's coming in and out, will have cameras as well, so we can monitor, we know what card is being used, and we can make sure that the appropriate people are using the garage.
So it's not included as part of the condo docs because they're condominiums, so it's not part of their purchase? So when they purchase the condo, parking's not included?
So how it generally works is they will purchase their condo and they will have a right to an easement in the parking garage. Instead of having, you know, fee simple interest in a specific space, that's how we've done it on previous projects. It allows the condominium association to have a little bit more control over the garage and make sure somebody doesn't, you know, misuse their space in some way, but it will be some level of control like that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I gotta get John back.
You got another question?
Oh, another.
Okay.
We have a few more slides.
We'll wait for John. He had to go tell people to be quiet.
So now we're looking at the second floor. We have seven units per floor, so essentially what we're going to be looking at from the second floor to the fifth floor, it's, it's identical floor plans, seven units. We have three bedrooms, one three-bedroom per floor, three two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms. We've located the three bedrooms and the two bedrooms, the larger units, in the corners to allow for better visibility and better window locations. We, as you explained before, we have the two means of egress, and we have one common area with, that would have a window and, to provide natural light. And on the second floor, as Dan mentioned, that's where we've located two roof decks, and we're trying to take advantage of the fact that we are taking the floor plate and we're bringing it in to allow for, for window locations, and because we're not doing that on the first floor, we have, we have a roof condition, then we're, we're using that as a roof deck for, for only those two units alone.
Say that, say that, there's only a roof deck for that?
There's, the roof decks would only be located in those, in those two areas that you see hatched right, right there where Dan is.
Okay, so they're only accessible to a limited, so they're only accessible to a limited number of units?
Only, only to those units, yeah. And that's because we have a roof right below.
Yep.
Okay. And as we, as we, next slide, please. Next one. There you go. So as you can see on the next slide, this is the third floor, you know, we don't see the roof decks anymore, but now we see the typical floor plan that would repeat essentially all the way up. We do have on the, on the fourth and the fifth floor along Broadway, and the building steps in a little bit to create some architectural interest, so that is the one, the one difference on the fourth and fifth floor. Next slide, please. You can see that at the bottom right, how it steps in a little bit. And next slide. This is the fifth floor, essentially, it's very similar. Now, going all the way up to, to the roof, the hatched areas is, is the areas that we will be allocating specifically for solar PV, and we'll make sure that all the other mechanical equipment is, is out of the way, and then we'll have one of the stairs would bring, will, will go all the way up to the roof for, you know, for maintenance access.
And that's, and only access to the roof is for maintenance?
Only for maintenance, yeah. Next slide, please. Now, now we're looking at the elevations as they, as they stand right now. The top elevation is, as if you would see it from, from Broadway, and the bottom one is what we call the west elevation, so it would be, you can see there, it's 434 Broadway, it's sort of in section at the bottom. As far as the elevation, you know, you see, we're looking at five stories, we're trying to take cues, architectural cues from Broadway, we're bringing brick as part of it, but we're making sort of a contemporary approach on that. On the west elevation, as we turn the building, we're changing materials, and we also are trying to use the mural or the idea of, of street art and bringing that into, into the building. Right now, we have, we just, we use the same mural there, but, but we also are thinking about using that in, in the back of the building, so if you can go to the next slide. So we're taking those cues and bringing them into the architecture. So, so you can see the top image right now, that's, that's what I call the, the back elevation, but...
And that's the entrance to the garage?
And that is the entrance to the garage, and then you see a man door right next to it, and that would be the access, the second means of egress. And then you see that, at the bottom is the east elevation, it's, you know, zero laut line, so there's not a lot of windows, there's only one set that gives, of windows that brings light to a common area. Next slide, please. Now, this is a section of the building. We have to the right Broadway, to the left Cherry Street, and this is where you can get a sense of the difference in elevations between Broadway and Cherry Street. It's essentially four feet of difference, and then from Cherry Street down to the basement, we're looking at about six feet, so what we're negotiating, the speed ramp is six feet as it goes down, as the cars would go down. Next slide, please. Oh, I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
And I think the only thing I didn't mention that wanted to add in here is we have, we're aiming to try to have this passive house and, along with the solar and EV ready, at least for EV chargers in the basement, and so we're trying to make this as green as possible and really be an example of what we can do as the building code advances in that direction, but thank you.
What are your plans for the retail?
For the retail, so we have a few different options. We have been speaking to Alberto Calvo for a little while about an idea for the space. We're going to spend a good amount of time over the next few months with him, hopefully exploring that. Ultimately, the retail will be, I'll take a step back, the retail will be a retail condo. The idea is that it can be owned by whoever the user is. It could be one space, it could be two. We haven't determined that yet, and...
So John, we can have them come back, and we want to know what the retail space looks like, right?
Yep.
If we choose to approve this.
So all you're asking for now is retail space?
That's right. We're not asking for anything specifically on retail space.
So we, so I, just from my perspective, I would like you, when you know what that retail space is, to have you come back and present that, but, so, okay.
So there isn't any, like, common areas within the building, shared common, common space other than the roof area on the fourth floor? That's it? There isn't any, like, green space within the building or anything like that?
Not within the building. There is, there's a small lobby, but it's not necessarily a, you know, community hangout. What we are hoping, I mean, our, our goal for the retail space is to make it this kind of community gathering space, so we'd like it to be that for the building residents, but also for the greater Chelsea residents as well, and make that an interesting place that people want to gather, but that would be the only space.
So you're not doing anything to the lower floors of the building, you're just going up? So the building is the building, which is important when you're talking about variances?
Uh, yes, I believe, yes.
You're not spending anything right, left, or back?
That's right, yeah. We're not going any farther out than what we currently have, and actually, as we go up, we tuck in a little bit from the sides so that we have a space from our neighbors and can put windows there in as well.
Here you go.
How high is the building?
It's 58 feet.
58?
Yep. That's from, from Broadway.
And that's still within the height? It's not?
Yeah, the height limit in the BR district is 80 feet.
How many, how many were approved, John, last time?
I'm sorry?
How many apartments were approved last time?
18, I think, 16, 16 last time.
Yes, 16 with eight parking spaces, yep.
Other than the economics side of doing something like this, what makes you more apartments?
Fundamentally, the need for, you know, I mean, two things. One, make the project work, so we, we want to, you know, make this a feasible project. The city, you know, bought the land, wanted to sell it to us at a certain price, so we needed to, you know, fit enough units to make it work, but also fundamentally, you know, the need for affordable homeownership is great. Being able to get your hands on something you own for $275,000, you know, build generational wealth that way is a really difficult thing to find. There is currently a state program that is new within the last two years to help fund these type of developments. There's only so much money there, and, you know, it's good to use it while we can, get it into our communities while we can, not let Boston take it all. So, you know, we wanted to make it work, we, you know, saw the existing plans, kind of saw a way to, you know, fit within the same scale of the building, but be a little bit more efficient with our layout, we thought, and get more opportunities for residents to own their own home.
With regards to the solar application, I assume they're flat panels as opposed to, currently, right now, I'm seeing the towers put together whereby they can increase the amount of space, amount of power generated and take up less space, but in this case, have you explored that at all?
We have not explored it in detail. We've worked on a number of our projects with a few different solar providers, so we will definitely get into more detail.
Well, it's a relatively new concept, but...
Yep, it's interesting.
I mean, you're, where you're up so high, I would assume, again, from the level, that you're not going to have anything interfering.
Plus, they would have to ask Joe for that because it might have an impact on height, so if they were going, if they were going vertical rather than horizontal, we might have height issues.
Yep, but they, they...
Yes, so regarding the height?
These, plus all the panels are not included in the height?
Oh, they're not included in height? But they're not?
Yeah. I believe the heights, it's 58 feet and...
And we're still, they're still below 80?
Up to 80, so they might add a couple feet if anything.
But do we have any other buildings on Broadway that are that height? Like the one across the street, is it similar height?
In terms of the solar panels, they need to be 10 feet away from, from the edge of the, of the building?
No, no.
You can, in the diagram, we showed it in the, in that hatched area, and, you know, they typically, yeah, will be flat, and you, I mean, that's what we are seeing these days, and the power grid would essentially cover them, so you wouldn't really be able to see them.
I just make that comment because I always like to tell people, back in 1980, we had solar panels on our roof. I'll show you the permit if you're interested.
So Marilyn asked if there were any buildings of comparable height in the area? And that's what you're looking at, John?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to find.
Yeah. Is it tall in comparison to the buildings that bought it?
Was the pre, how, how many floors was the previous proposal?
The previous proposal, I believe, was four floors, but almost the same exact height.
Oh, okay, but this...
The gap between the first floor and where the second floor started was much higher, so if you look at the difference, it's about the same. You know, 466 Broadway, which is two doors down, is three stories, then we have a two-story building next door, then the one-story across the way, I believe, is three, and there are...
So you have this ginormous building and then we have this other building?
They appear to be one to, one to three stories now, but with, the idea is that this is going to be a catalyst for redevelopment of some, especially the one-story buildings, so you may have, of similar heights in the future.
And we have setback, you know, the setbacks on the top are, you know, based on the idea that our neighbors at some point will develop up, and that, you know, we can't count on them being one story forever.
And, and I'm sorry, the last question, regarding the, the purchase of condo, because it's affordable, so is this going to be like a lottery process?
That's right. So it'll be similar to how affordable rental works. We'll do an affirmative fair housing marketing plan that will be overviewed over, there will be oversight from the state and the city. We'll go through that process, we'll get everybody in, go through a lottery, once you're selected, then we go through eligibility with the various preference standards, such as Chelsea city resident, hopefully, and then you're selected from there, and then you'll have a set amount of time to close on your condo, and usually, we're, we're there to help people through the process because it's almost all first-time homebuyers. So we, they generally use the one mortgage program, there's some down payment assistance available, we make sure that, you know, anybody and everybody that's applying knows what's out there for them so they can get the best possible deal.
Okay. So this is still a public hearing? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Sure, please come in, make me, please introduce yourself.
He's sleeping, fell asleep.
Oh, no. I know that feeling.
Carl Allen, I'm the economic development planner for the city of Chelsea. Back in 2017, we started a process called Reimagine Broadway, and this was one of the sites we first focused on in addition to changes to the streetscape. I've been here long enough that I remember the Salvation Army, and will be very happy to see it ripped down in the very near future, but...
Well, bit ripped up.
Ripped up, yes. And as, you know, John was saying, the city views this as a catalyst to creating a denser Broadway where more people live, there are more people on the street, there is more people spending money along the corridor and improving the economic well-being of downtown Chelsea, and we really do hope to see this type of project replicated. You will, at some point in the not-too-distant future, see one being proposed across the street that's also likely to be about five stories. And in terms of the retail, we're trying to work with a variety of people and figure out how the economics of purchasing that retail condo would make sense. The original proposal was for an incubator for startup businesses where they could get their feet wet and develop a clientele. their feet wet and develop a clientele before expanding into larger storefronts in downtown Chelsea. At this point, it's not clear if the economics will pencil out, but we are committed to having a robust retail presence that will activate the streetscape.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this before I close it? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion. John, talk to me about both the Planning Board and the Planning Department.
Planning Board recommended approval with a, a number of conditions. Planning Department is... is recommending approval as well with some additional conditions. I did bring this to the Historical Commission. They had some concern. This is a historical district. This was discussed with the, with the petitioner at the Planning Board. They had some concern that the building should look a little bit more like the buildings across the street, taking some of the historical characters. They understand that a new building is not supposed to look exactly like the old historic buildings. That's not really how the streetscape develops over time. But they did recommend design review, and that is one of the conditions that they did recommend.
Where, no, I'm disappointed in you. Where's the trash going?
Good question. We are also the owner of 466 Broadway, which is two doors down where the McDonald's is now. Actually, their trash right now is held on a site behind 440 Broadway. It is a little lot on Cherry Street that has a chained-off dumpster area. Our plan is to use this project as a way to really improve that dumpster area, make it much nicer, build a much nicer fence, a much nicer enclosure, and use it for both these properties. So what we have is...
But it's not officially part of this property?
It isn't. We would come, we would have an easement agreement or some kind of legally binding agreement that would give this property permanent rights to be able to use that, so that it can always have the ability to use the trash.
So we run something, if you're going to do something, it has to be something that's permanent?
That's one of the conditions I'm recommending, submit to my department, a legal easement for that, for the both uses, because, because you're no longer going to own this building. It's actually going to be a different owner, so there has to be some legal agreement. An agreement by itself can go away any time, whereas an easement is a little bit more permanent.
A legal easement, that's, that's with the deed.
Yep, and that's what we would intend on. It would be recorded. It would be the right of the future condo owners forever. And so that lot is this little lot right here. This is 440, this is 466. And if you remember from our diagram, there's a, a ramp leading down from the elevator lobby right back here, so it just pops out right there, and then the dumpster's right there. So...
Do you have storage, do you have trash storage inside?
We do not right now.
So what would people do with their trash? You have twenty-eight units. What are they going to do with their trash?
Bring it down to the dumpster. That's what we do on our properties on Garechaffey right now. Yes.
Okay. How large is the dumpster?
Dumpster, right now, I honestly don't know the measurements, but it will be sized to be able to do both buildings. It'll also depend on the retail use, the size we need, and the pace of the pickups. So, you know, whether it's...
Is that part of design review, John?
Yes.
Okay, because I mean, I think that's, that's pretty crude. I mean, you have twenty-eight places. You need, you don't want stuff ending up pouring all over a dumpster that's only accommodates twelve.
Yep, it's vital to get the size right and the number of pickups right, so that it is both never overfills.
And reasonable access, because people have to be able to use it.
Yep, exactly. You know, one of the benefits we think of this is that it currently, you know, we have a garbage company goes back there, picks it up. We'll be able to just continue doing that without having another stop in another section for, you know, blocking up Cherry Street during that process. So we think this is a win-win. We also, you know, the chain link fence frankly, you know, needs some work, and this will be an opportunity to make it a much nicer dumpster enclosure than it currently is.
And some kind of pest control?
And some kind of...
Pest control?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so this is also, you're looking for variances. So you know you have to comply with the four requirements of variance, and you have to comply with all of them. You need variances for open space and setbacks?
Rear setback, I believe.
Rear setback and, and usable open space.
Yes.
So let's go, we can say them collectively, you don't have to, but you need to be able to defend each one of these reasonably. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
So the relief that sought is really the same as what...
You can sit down.
Can I? Thanks. The relief that sought is similar to what was granted in your prior decision for the city.
We don't, this is a new case to settle.
Certainly. So, so really, the, the, the way that we meet it is really the same as, is how it was listed in that prior decision. The, the rear yard setback and reduced usable open space are necessary because of the, the unique shape of the lot. It's really two kind of offset rectangles, which makes it difficult to push the building in or in the rear and to provide space for open space and things. So, and in addition...
And you're bound by, and you're bound on both sides.
And, and on top of that, it's, it's a strange shape. It's 8,000 square feet. It's not, it's not overly large to, to be able to develop. And it, we talked about with the parking, it has a grade. It's lower in the back, and so makes it difficult to bring it in and, and develop it, have adequate parking, have adequate space.
So it's the shape and the structure itself, the shape of the lot and the structure makes it?
Correct.
All right. Yes, no? Yes. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship financial or otherwise to the petitioner or applicant.
The project would have to be reduced in size, the number of units, the number of parking spaces, in order to bring it in twenty feet in the back to meet...
You couldn't, you couldn't build something there.
You couldn't build what you're doing, so...
You couldn't build pretty much anything there.
Makes it completely financially unfeasible.
Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is an easy one.
The, the building is there. It occupies from, you know...
It's an enhancement to the public good.
And, and this will enhance it, twenty-eight affordable units.
Just, oh, that's always the easy one. I don't know why people just don't say that one. Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
So the purpose of the BR district is to bring a range of businesses and services to the downtown area and create a vibrant and pedestrian activity, a commercial storefront. And that's exactly what this project does. It replaces an existing building.
It does not derogate at all, it is inconsistent with. Yes. Okay, you've met the requirements of the variance.
And would you please provide me with a copy of your, your reasons?
Yep, that's spelled out in our, our project summary.
Excellent, thank you.
That's why I read it to you, so I get it right. One thing to add, I don't think that we brought this up. It's in our application materials, that we are requesting a waiver of the Community Trust Fund payment related to the variances.
I'm sorry?
They want a waiver of the Community Trust Fund payment.
Because this is an affordable project, so request...
The board does have the ability to waive that payment after a recommendation from my department. My recommendation is to waive it.
To waive it, okay. Okay, so the conditions that we have...
Would you please take a vote on it?
Well, we're going to.
Okay, okay.
We haven't yet, we haven't yet.
All right.
We won't impose it as a condition, or do I have to, do we have to affirmatively obnot, do we have to affirmatively address that separately?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to waive the community improvement plan?
Yes.
Second? Any of you all in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's fine.
Madam Chair, if I might also...
Don't push your luck, what?
You know, as with the first matter tonight, you know, if there are things that are open because there's only four members tonight, questions, things that we should come back for, we're more than willing to do.
Right, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, do we have any concerns about this? I don't think that's going to be an issue. It's, I'm not hearing that there's an issue. Okay? So we can resolve this.
That sounds great, perfect.
So let's just be, John, I want, just, could you please go, list the proposed conditions from the Plan Department?
There'd be standard conditions as applicable, design review, residents are not eligible to participate in the Resident Stick a Parking Program, and said prohibition is to be included in all rental, I'm sorry, all sale and lease documents. No rental, lease, sublease, or other rental period of less than 12 months, and that must be clearly included in the condo and lease documents. And prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the petitioner shall submit to the Department of Permitting Land Use Planning a legal easement on the Cherry Street Lot Plan for Trash Disposal to allow for ongoing use of the site for trash disposal. And these, these are to be wordsmithed, but that's generally what it is.
Are you guys okay with those?
We are.
Do we have a motion based, and with, including those particular conditions? Joe?
Make a motion that case number 2023-05, 440 Broadway, Causeway Development, for a special permit in variance for the construction of a five-story building with twenty-eight affordable homeownership units be approved with the standard conditions and those conditions as outlined.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, good luck. Do a nice job. Do a nice design review. Okay. The next case in front of us is 2022-10213 Everett Ave, Verdant, care of Doug Vets, Med Vets. For determination in accordance with condition number one of the approved special permits and variance, whether proposed changes to the plan continue minor or major changes and approval of said changes. The changes include a reduction in the footprint of the building, a reduction in the floor area, and a number of parking spaces. Remember, you're our last ones. Names, names?
Just to, before we get started, it's Matthew Jures of CI Design, Dinsmore Court in Cambridge. But we'll dispense with, with putting the boards up because we'll, we'll do it all up here and there's no public...
Yeah, it's just us. So our job here is to determine today whether this is a major or a minor change. If it's a minor change, we can vote on it here. If it's a major change, then it has to be re-advertized and you have to come in front of us all over again.
This meeting has been advertised as a public hearing, so you can, so you can, you can vote tonight.
Even if it's major?
Yes.
All right. Okay, but we still have to determine if it's major or minor. Well, we're going to vote on whether it's major or minor no matter what. So, but if it's, we decide it's major, they don't have...
Correct.
They would have to come back or not have to come back?
No.
All right, that's weird. Okay. All right, talk to us what you're changing.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks for hearing us tonight, and we spent a lot of energy on this last summer, and, and we appreciate that time, and sorry to come back. But so, essentially, we're asking to reduce the size of the building. If we could move on to the, the next slide? And actually, let's, let's start with the plans and we can move on. These, these are changed slightly.
This is on Floramos site, correct?
This is correct, yeah.
All right, just want to make sure this is all right.
That's right. And so, and here's the, the existing conditions of the site, and I'm going to do this, since I don't have my pointer.
It's easier, there you go.
Yeah, I can do Carol Merrill. Okay, and so Floramos, this is a, a piece of, of property owned by the hotel behind, and then a small strip of, of land owned by the city. And we can go ahead to the next one. And so the approval for the building was lot line to lot line, and so we, we appreciated that approval and, and got busy planning and, and working through the acquisition of the properties and, and combining the, the lots. And in, in, in doing that, we found that the timeline for the acquisition of the, the sliver on the side that's owned by the city particularly, i- is going to be a, a longer timeline than we had anticipated. So the, the clients went back and, and sort of recalculated the, the finance of the, of the building and the, the timeline of the building, what it would look like bringing it to, to, to market, and made the decision that rather than waiting for that, that property to transmit, to transfer, they will reduce the size of the building and begin construction on, on schedule. And when this piece of property transfers, we'll take prop, take ownership of it and leave it as an open space. And, and so go vertical. So we can go through, and if you want, we can sort of talk, talk through the square footage of the...
No, but this basically, it's the same exact thing except for taking away that strip because you don't own it yet.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Keep going. What else do you want to propose? Is that so, and you said that's the footprint?
That's correct.
With reduction in the floor area, and where's the parking space impact? What's the parking space?
Right. So existing, so existing square footage is 300,000, 339,580. We were taking 50,000 square feet out of the building, reducing it by 15% would be a building of 289,400 square feet in the reduced size.
And again, just from a non-square foot perspective, you're just taking that slice and you're not building it?
Correct. Right. So parking original is, is 208 spaces in, in the building, in a parking structure inside the building. In the new configuration, 147 spaces.
So what was the first number?
Two-hundred-and-eight.
So, and, and again, is that because the slice is not underneath there anymore, or why is it, why are you reducing the parking space?
Because the, the, the parking deck takes, really, that's part of why we need to go side to side in the previous configuration, in order to get a full circulation and maximize the, the parking spaces. And so the parking spaces are, are impacted when we take that slice out.
So everything is related to just reducing that slice because that building, because that space is not currently owned by you?
Exactly. I mean, there, literally, there's no other issue here other than how to modify the building to...
Do you guys think that's minor or major?
Minor.
You go? I think it's minor.
You say you're going to leave it open? That space is going to stay open or...
A hundred percent.
Once they own it, yeah. Once they, they're not going to add the building. They're not going to build a building up.
Right.
But when you say, when you say open, is it going to be just asphalt in there?
No, no, no. So, right. So, good question. So we have a, a, a number of, you know, sort of brainstorming how to activate the space, and, and it's an asset for us. So, you know, the Planning Board recommended a skate park. We're considering maybe this would, would be an outdoor food court that we try to make three seasons. And we've, we've looked at a sculpture garden, a planted space.
But it's going to be you. I guess what I think Hugo's concern is he just doesn't want a paved space there that gets crap, trapped. It's going to be an activated space.
Absolutely. That, that's, we don't want a space that's going to be an attractive nuisance or, or vacant. We want to use it as an asset.
Is that, I mean, is that, I think, is that, yeah, we were thinking about when you were saying that, what are they going to do with that space? I think it's minor. Does the hotel use that space right now? Does a, a butter?
No, no, that's really, it's part of the, the Floramos parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they park cars. You can see the...
So they don't have access to that? So Floramos was basically using city space when it was, as opposed to all those...
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's a... But, but there's a retaining wall right along there, and, and so the elevation on this side is a couple of feet higher than, than here, so it's sort of a natural break.
So we're rectifying a wrong.
A little bit, yeah.
And the reduction of the spaces doesn't have any effect on the upper part of the building or like...
Oh, it slices all the way up.
It does.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to, I mean, it, it, cantilevering the building and taking over that square footage again would, is very attractive from a financial proposition. Structurally, it, it, it adds cost, but we don't, and we'd also be, you know, we need to get, we'd need to get air rights to do that if the property didn't transfer, you know, in a, in a time period. So it complicates it in, in a way that's, you know, makes it not really feasible.
Minor?
Minor.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
Do I make a motion? Somebody have a motion that's minor? I make a motion that it's minor. Second? All approved?
And to carry over the, uh, existing...
And to carry, it goes, yeah, to carry over the existing conditions other than those directly, that wouldn't make any sense based on this change.
Okay, so with that, that determination that it's, it's a minor, it, it's also approved in, in that...
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, do, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have to approve anything? No, that was it. We just approved it as a minor.
Approved as minor, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
And second by you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye, guys. Bye, guys.